Is on her way and I just let her know that we'll go ahead and get started without her. We are here for the purposes of a study session to talk about diploma options as directed from a previous board meeting. Dr. Hall, where you presented on some of these really cool opportunities that we have available to us and our students in the coming years. So I'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you. It's good to be here and it's fun to to talk about this. On the front of the memo, I just kind of said, you know, I I hope we have a couple of outcomes. My goals for this session are just to really make sure first that we have a deep understanding of both the current structures for credit and the way that they could look and what that might do. What what we are interested as the board, so what you're interested in the board of doing and what that might look like and how we can make sure that it is implemented well across the district, communicated well, and that that we can tie this work to the work that we're doing across the board with our strategic plan and with all of the other work that we're doing to make sure that when students leave, you know, this is going to be my bumper sticker. I I want students to leave with choices. I want them to be able to do whatever it is that they want to do. And so the question is, how do we continue to make sure that they're ready? So the first question that I'd like to ask is just, you know, we've now talked about this twice in a board meeting and we have this opportunity to talk about it in a in a study session. How do you see this topic connecting to our strategic plan for student achievement and or your own three board goals? What what connections do you see around this?
First, if we're talking about attendance, I see the this diploma option as a way to have a more full schedule and thus be incentivized to be in school more of the school day through senior year.
That's interesting that you said that, Ashley. That was my immediate response. I think it does support more engagement with students.
Yeah, and ditto on theirs. And ultimately with that, we hopefully will see meet our goals for academic improvement and such as well.
I love these things because I've talked to principals in our district and also principals in some of our surrounding districts that have different requirements than we do. And that was very much what they said they hoped would happen at the very beginning and did happen. There were a couple of other things that have been reported and of course this is anecdotal data, but several principals said they saw more students taking a fourth year of math or science or more students taking CE class. More kids exploring things like an art class or a second level pottery class, not poverty class, pottery class. You know, because we have sometimes this idea that I'll I'll take the minimum and and that'll be enough. But but this really opens up those opportunities for them to say, what are some of the other things that might be interesting? So I thought that, I'm sorry, yes.
Have you seen where or other districts where they utilize those CTE classes more or?
Yeah, in fact, it it's interesting because in some places that's actually even a requirement. And in some states, they've done a lot with that CTE requirement. Again, just to to kind of make sure that students leave with choices. And I know that I talk about my friend Louise every time this comes up. But I went to high school with a girl called Louise, Louise Caï, which now I've put out into the universe, but that's all right. But but she is a mechanical engineer and she works in aerospace. But she graduated from, I went to a Title I high school, we were in a Title I high school, and she graduated with her nail technician's license. And it was extremely flexible. She could work her schedule around and she graduated with her bachelor's degree with no student debt. So I mean, there are just a lot of ways to be thinking about what this what this can look like for kids to open those choices and to do those things, as well as, you know, the many different ways that we earn college credit. I thought we could start with a little protocol on the on page three. I've got a little agenda. I'm gonna, we're a little behind, but I'm gonna try to catch us up here. But on the on the next page, we have an overview, and you've seen this before, an overview of Utah Public District graduation requirements that we found on their website. And, you know, I'm sure that somebody is going to look at this out there in TV land and one of these might be slightly wrong because it got it off a website that hadn't been updated. But roughly, this is where we look in Utah. And after that, I also have our own I two, which will shortly be updated with some new things in place for the coming years. But when we do a what do we see, what do we wonder protocol, the first thing that we do is we look at some data and we talk about what we observe, just factual statements, no judgment, no questions, just things like, I see that graduation requirements for most districts include additional electives. So I was just wondering if you might take a look at these pages to begin for a minute or two and then just things that you notice, just factual statements.
We are the only non-rural district without an honors diploma. Most of them get there through elective classes added only rather than required classes being very specific.
I would add to that, even when they've required a specific class, the bulk of that is still in elective. So they may have required one or two classes, but there's still quite a bit of student choice.
And my two cents is, there's a lot of variation here. So what we do can be what we feel makes sense.
This is something that the state gives to districts as a as a local control issue to to make these choices. As long as we don't mess with the bottom 24 with that base layer, we can we can do what we want.
So, Dr. Hall, when you look at Granite, you have under, I'm thinking maybe you do have conversations with Granite and that they're next door to us or whatever. It says school diploma, so is that similar to what you were talking about in one of those options with, okay, the 24 credits is a general diploma or and then you have your school diploma and and then they're going on and they're having, well, do those electives add into that 27 credit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's all, anything that shows, this is a great question and clarification. Anything that shows a plus means that that is on top of that base 24. So now, as we've looked at this, I'd I'd like to move to what do we wonder? And this is where we talk about questions or things that we wonder. And in doing that, I bet you're wondering, who is this? But you all know Emily Sutherland. Emily Sutherland is the area director. She's over all of the high schools. And so things like their budgets, their staffing, their personnel, their buildings, all all of those questions are things that she'll work with on a regular basis too. So in terms of people who talk the most to the high school principals, Emily would be one of those people in our district that probably talks the most to principals. So as we move to, you know, because I can answer the factual stuff really easily. It's right here on the paper. I typed it. But, you know, what are the things that you that this data either about other districts or our own makes you wonder?
Oh, that's loud. I'm just wondering about the the cost that we may incur as a result of adding more credits, more classes, that sort of thing.
And on top of that, like, what would that mean for teachers as well and administrators? If we were to add more requirements? I mean, we know a lot about how important the the day is down to the minute. And, you know, we hear a lot from teachers about the workload and being overwhelmed with certain requirements. And when you add all of them up, there's certainly some some discussions I think we need to have about that too in coordination with with our teachers.
So maybe I'll start and then if there's something you'd like to add on to that. So one one of the things, this question was was hinted at before, was about, you know, what would this look like in terms of staffing? And so when we look at the enrollment and staffing report, and I'm feeling awfully good that Mr. Kirsley and Mr. Quantz are here, so if I say something wrong, they will correct me. But our enrollment projections are all based on ADM, average daily membership. And we have a formula that looks at that at a student to teacher ratio that is thirty point two. So when that is calculated, it is already calculated at the number of students in each grade, and that's significant. So in fact, I'm going to pass this out. This is, I'm sorry about that. That's a bad pass. But if you'll, if you'd like to just take a look at this, this is just a sample enrollment projection sheet. As you can see that we've looked at over the years, this would, this generally comes out from our human resources department to principals, right? In about January. So December, you're working on it, November, December, and it comes out, you know, in January to them. And they look at that and you can see that it's it's actually looking at it per grade level. So this is how many ninth graders you have. So this is how many teachers you have. And that is based on teachers or students having a full schedule, having eight classes. Now, I know that teachers on a full schedule teach six classes, but this isn't based on that. This is based on how many students. And so, for instance, when we look at the 12th grade, you'll see that, you know, we had at this school 470 projected seniors, and that's the largest class. And so there were 15.56 teachers allocated for that group of students, even though we know that many seniors do not have a full schedule. So the teachers, the the FTE are allocated based on the number of students that are there for a full day. So that's that's one, one of those pieces is that the teacher staffing is already there. So what does that look like in terms of what that might change in a school? So one of the things that it might look like, or one of the complaints that we hear is sometimes it's hard to get into certain classes. And often, sometimes that can be that that's a class where one period or two periods is all that is taught, right? And so a master schedule should always be driven by what students choose to enroll in. So if you had, you know, I mean, if you have 435 freshmen and they all need English nine, you need to have enough periods of English nine that every freshman can find a seat in English nine. Once you've filled up those basic requirements then and you're looking at some of those other classes, then you might have 20 students that want to take Advanced Pottery III and you might have six students that want to take Advanced French and you might have 14 students that want to take Calculus BC. I don't know. I'm just making this up. Those would be really small classes. And sometimes schools choose to carry a small class. This happens a lot, for instance, with IB because there are certain classes that as kids move down an IB graduation pathway, they need a class and the school schedules that class even though that might be a 17 or 20 or 22 or 24 student class. It's a small class for high school. So in looking at that, decisions around the master schedule have to be made. And when we are looking at things like conflicts, being aware of if I'm scheduling a Calculus BC class and I'm only going to have two, who are the kids that are going to take that class? And are they also taking concurrent enrollment English? And if that's the case, I'm going to try to make sure that that doesn't overlap with at least one of those Calculus BC classes. So this is why master schedule is kind of like magic, right? Like to 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 do that, it takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of looking at course-taking patterns and thinking about that. But while that part is difficult, it would not, increasing the number of required units would not necessarily change the number of teachers you would need to have, unless you were moving into some of those very specialized classes and making choices around having small classes. On the other side, you also have larger classes. You have PE, which is usually larger than that. You have a lot of your fine arts classes, your choirs or your bands or your orchestras. Those are routinely larger than a math class or a language arts class, just because of the nature of the class that they are. So kind of taking that question to the next step, I just wanted to, I'll direct your attention. If you go in a few pages, we have some credit earning patterns. So I thought, well, let's take a look and see what's happening already, right? With with students and how many classes they're taking. So if you'll flip past I two and you'll get to the colored bar graph, this is data that we polled at the end of last year. So it was within a week of the end of school. And, you know, it was just a time that we had we had plunged some data, so that's the data I'm using here. And I sorted it to see what percentage of students were already only earning 24 units, 25 units, 26 units, or 27 or more units. And so I thought that was interesting that at every one of our schools, more than half of our students, 61% at East, 73% at Highland, and 56% at West, were already taking more than 27 units when they graduated. Now, I want to go back and just remind everybody that it's 20, it's, you've got to take the right units to clear that 24, right? You've got to take the right units, but after that, you can take anything you want. And so we already have the majority of our students taking more than 24 units and and in fact, a large number of them taking and passing more than 27 units. So that made me just kind of think, oh, I wonder, you know, what that looks like because as you look at this, you always get down to it and there's like one or two or four kids at the very, very bottom of the list on both sides, you know, flat 24 and way higher. So the second one just looks at that top end. And so how many of the students in the first graph, 27 or more, earned 28 or more? And so you can see that while that's just a little bit lower, it is still a fairly high number with more than half of students at Highland earning 28 or more. And then going down a little bit to 29 or more and then around 32 or more, we sort of tap out. So you ask yourself, well, how do you earn 32 or more? Because remember, in in a year, if we took a full schedule, we'd have eight periods. And I did not take seminary. Eight periods times four years would be 32. So how would I get more than 32? That's a wonder. What might that look like?
Online credits that students take or concurrent enrollment or classes at the University of Utah in the summer, etc.
Yeah, or classes at the high school in the summer. So so these are students who are really going outside of that to say, I want to be competitive for different colleges or I just want to challenge myself and take some stuff over the summer. Or I'm really interested in this and I have an opportunity to do something in the summer or or online with it. So we really do see some course-taking patterns that show us this isn't that different than what's happening now. So that was a little bit of a surprise to me. So I think that's a great wondering. What would it look like and what would it do? Well, we're already a little bit doing it and our students and our and our teachers are engaging kids in this way to do some more like that.
I think maybe you could say that they're telling us they want some. Anyway, I think that you could interpret that, that we're being told that there's an interest in this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
As a question, we're looking at the three comprehensive high schools, but if this decision was made to change our diploma offerings, it would apply to other high schools, correct?
It would also, yeah, apply to Horizonte. And the only reason I didn't compare Horizonte with this data is just that they, students will sometimes go to Horizonte and come back. And so I just decided I would look at that last piece because theoretically, you know, once a, once a leopard, always a leopard. I lost the cat there. I was like, it's not a jaguar. It's a panther. Once a panther, always a panther, right?
And like slicker innovations or other things, it would apply to them, but this is not going to give you as robust of like a sample. That's all. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I knew what we were looking at.
Absolutely. One hundred percent. Thank you.
And it's a good day to be a leopard.
Good day to be a leopard.
Or a ram. I think it's the ram fam that he has.
Go Aztecs. I think we've got all kinds of things.
Go Cubs.
Are there any other wonderings as we look at this?
I'm, oh, sorry. I was wondering if at other schools that you looked at, did it affect graduation rates at all? Or did it, or student engagement, did they, did they, were they able to study that?
So again, um.
Or, I'm sorry, you already, it's in here.
Well, no, just just what they are requiring is in here. So what I, what I would say is, if a district's graduation rate suddenly went from 95 to 50, they would probably relook at those requirements. One of the things that I talked to one of our principals that came from another district and one of the things that he said was, you know, just making sure that students understand those requirements from day one. You know, again, this isn't something you you come up to a senior and say, hey, thanks for having 26 credits, but now you've got to have 29, so good luck this year grabbing those extra three. You know, you want to make sure that that students are coming in and that they're getting that guidance so that they know what's expected. And and in terms of engagement and attendance, you know, across the board, we're always going to have attendance issues. We will always have issues with, you know, kids who come on test day and get 100% on the test, but they haven't done the homework. Like, all of those things happen all the time. So those are always kind of conversations that we'll have to have around being successful and graduating.
I guess, this is just for me, but when I was looking at the, you know, the breakdown of the different schools, several of the rural school districts like Duchaine or Grand or Paiute or, they have like 36 or 32 or, do you know what they're doing there?
Yes, I had to call to find out because it was not clear on the internet to me.
I'm looking at that going, wow, that's substantial.
So so some of these schools are running on trimesters. And so kids are earning, they, instead of earning the opportunity to earn eight, they would have the opportunity to earn 12.
Oh, okay.
Yes, because I was like, woo, Duchaine, knocking it out of the park there with 36. Somebody else is like that too, and and that's how I figured that out. Kane and South Summit, so anytime you're seeing that in in the 30s, they're probably running trimesters.
That's really helpful.
Yes, it is, because that was kind of freaking me out. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Observation. So I am nervous about us increasing our minimum requirement for many reasons. Partly, I experienced with my own child that disengagement and just trying to get through to that point so that he can move on. And now he's happily in the working world, which is great. But when we're looking at the 24 units, 25 units, 26 units, if I'm reading this right, the percentage of students that are graduating in these unit parameters, if my math is correct, for Highland High exam, for example, that's 133 students that if we would have said 24 is no longer exceptional, acceptable, you needed 25 or 26, it's potentially 133 more students that will not graduate if they cannot, if we cannot engage them and help them succeed. So subsequently, and for example, West, that's potentially 300. And if we go clear up to 27, that's almost 1,000 students whenever the student population at West currently is in the, I don't know, 23, 2200 range, depending on the numbers currently. So I I'm all for a honors diploma, so to speak, to reward those individuals, to incentivize, help with that engagement piece, but I don't want to lose students in the process.
What a great point. And so I'd I'd like to go to our next page with that point. But the thing that I'd like to say before we go there is there is also the fact that they weren't required at this point to have more. And so that's where that communication piece really comes in. So if we're communicating that 24, and and you're right, so for instance, at West, let's say that there were roughly 500 seniors, that's about what they were, 502, but math is hard, so let's do 500. And so if I looked at the 14%, that would be roughly, well, 10% would be 50 and another 5% would be, so about 70 kids would be 14%. So so that's, I mean, when you put real faces to those numbers, that becomes a thing with, is that really a diploma that you would want them to not have the opportunities to do this? And so that's why, you know, many districts are looking at kind of a tiered diploma so that that is a is a thing. But, sorry, I lost my train of thought there for a second. I'm going to get back on it. But but it's that idea of what is it that we're expecting of kids and how are we supporting them in reaching those expectations? And so if we say from the get-go, when you come here, you will need to do 25. You need to do these 24 and one extra thing, whatever that is, or 26 or 27. They have ample opportunity to do that. The the question is, how do we communicate that and and how do we make sure that it's?
Well, that and like, it sounds fabulous, but whenever we already know we have engagement issues, we already know we have attendance issues. If we're able to expand the opportunities for the students, you're you're saying you don't feel like you need more FTE. But once we can decrease our absenteeism rates and improve our engagement and see our numbers to where we have a larger percentage of students that are naturally going 26, 27, 28, because we've got the honors diploma piece on there without bumping up that lower one, then bumping up the lower one, you know, like fix the issues that are going on as a contribution to why kids are exiting or not graduating is kind of where I'm landing. Until we get, improve those things and bring down our absenteeism and increase our engagement and increase our academic outcomes, I feel like it's kind of put in the cart before the horse, so to speak.
Well, I just, just a thought, I went, when I went to East and spoke with the principal about truancy and absenteeism, you know, a lot of kids are saying, well, we don't have a period. But they're, like, there's, a lot of kids are using that as an excuse not to go to class and to be doing other things. So I don't know if just adding, just setting it a little bit higher, making sure that, you know, maybe you shouldn't, I mean, maybe it will be less students out of, you know, that will have free periods like that. So that's just a thought.
And that's something that I think we hear from a lot of high schools, that when students don't have a full schedule, like, let's say that I have a first period and a third period, so I decide to go to McDonald's during second period. It's a lot harder to get back to third period because it's more fun to be at McDonald's. Another thing that I hear sometimes is if students only have one period in a day, then it's a lot harder to decide to get up and put pants on when you are only doing it for one period, where if you have a bunch of things. So part of this might be, how are we looking at what we're communicating to students? How, what is our our philosophy of, I'll go back to my initial statement, what is it that we want them to be ready to do at the end? And are we wanting to say, we want you to do the minimum? Or in this district, we want you to do more and we know that you have time in the day? So if you look at the next period, I mean, these are all great questions and exactly why we're in a study session, right? To kind of wrestle with what this looks like. The next page, and then I'm going to go to the one that that speaks to Board Member Longwell's point. But this is just a sample college requirement table. It just looks at some of the, kind of the top-tier programs, some of our very highly selective schools. You can fill in the blanks there with whatever schools that would be. But you'll notice that. But you'll notice that, that they are requiring four years of math, some of them four years of science, um, two to four years of a, of a foreign language. You know, so there are some other things that when we're only talking about meeting the twenty-four, are we having those conversations around, and, you know, what is it that you need to really be, um, highly literate and highly? I don't care if you don't want to go to Princeton today. Maybe you want to go to Stanford in five years. If you don't have another transcript between high school and five years from now, that's still the one they're going to look at. And, you know, they'll account some other things as they look at that, but, you know, that, that's where they're going to go. And as you, as you look down and, and think about what, what all of these things look like and you come down to, you know, um, to think about where do we want to, to put, to release kids into the wild, like when they go into the wild, how do we want them to be prepared? So, the next page after this looks at some, some different types of diplomas and what that can look like. And that is also what Board Member Ash, um, Anderson was speaking about earlier with, you know, that idea of a basic diploma, the, a, a district diploma, that, that we don't just maybe hand out willy-nilly, but we, we look at it and we say, there are factors or reasons why you would, um, you would be cleared to earn this. Again, this is, this is, we're just talking here, I'm spitballing. And then we have a standard diploma that might have the school name on it and that might, um, include some additional electives, unless there was something that somebody felt very firmly about and convinced everybody else to feel firmly about. Um, and then there are some things with some honors diplomas. Now, I included, and I know not everybody reads all the things and, and that's fine, but I included a couple of articles. And one of this is, um, rethinking high school graduation requirements. It's kind of a look across the board, it's fairly recent, October of twenty-twenty-four, so it's not a year old yet. And, um, one of the things that I thought was interesting in it is it looks at some of the, the things states have done. And I was intrigued by Ohio, which is on page seven, if, if you've downloaded it and you're looking at it. One of the things, you know, they are requiring, um, as of the class of twenty-twenty-three, four units of English, four of math, so that's one more than we require, three science, three social studies, point five of PE, we require more PE, point five of health, five units of electives, that's what we do. Um, one of fine arts, we do one point five, economics and financial literacy, we do that as well. But they list a host of diploma seals, and the state actually created these. But it is part of what they call their career and college readiness, um, program. And so in looking at some of these seals that students can earn, um, one of them is a military enlistment seal, one of them is a technology seal, um, one of them is an industry-recognized credential seal, um, a citizenship seal, an Ohio means jobs readiness seal, a biliteracy, a college ready, a science, and an honors diploma. And they have six different options for that. They have a community service seal, they have a student engagement seal, and they have a fine and performing arts seal. And they've created, um, criteria for each of those that are then recognizable in Ohio. Now, granted, when the state does it, then it's, you know, much more recognizable and people can talk about that. But I always think one of the things like, um, a, a long time ago, I was an Eagle Scout badge person, like we would help with that. And I'd always say, make sure in your cover letter, if you're applying for something, explain what that means. Like, talk about your project, because just saying, I'm an Eagle Scout, isn't always enough for people who don't know what that is. So if you were to get an honors diploma, make sure that you say, I earned an honors diploma and, and bring that into the conversation, so it's not just on your transcript. But, but those are some of the things that other states and other places are doing, and they're not the only one. And they look at a lot of different things, they look at some test scores, they look at GPA, they look at attendance. Um, you know, there are, um, districts in Utah that have attendance as one of the requirements, that you must have, um, X number of classes your senior year, you must attend eighty percent or more, and you must, um, have a GPA over three point oh. So, you know, this is a process where when you say, we want to talk about what's important to us, it, it doesn't just have to be the number of units, so, um, there is that.
I have a question about this. The, um, this might be for Emily Sutherland also, that when we look at these options and you mentioned the examples from Ohio, we do have at our high schools like different cords or honors that you can receive. So my big question about how an option like this would be rolled out is how it would be distinct from or connected to what each of our high schools currently offer and whether they offer the same things. And the second part of that would be, we know, as I shared in the last board meeting, that Canyons is scaling down their number of diplomas. So I would not want to look at an option where we're rolling out like many, many diplomas simultaneous to not tidying up other business. So I guess, I don't know if you and/or Emily wanted to speak to that at all.
Well, I'll, do I have to speak in this? Yes. Sorry. Um, well, I'll just say, I know that Tiffany is working on, um, getting a committee together to look at a lot of like our academic issues across our high schools. And, I mean, I'll let her speak to that too, but that's kind of one of the things we want to look at is what are we, how are we honoring our different students throughout the year and at graduation? How does that look different at our high schools and how does it look the same? And we recognize the need to have some consistency, but also some autonomy, um, because there are schools that have like very special awards that we don't want to just kill, right? Um, but also we would like some consistency in terms of, uh, and, and I would guess that this, like what types of diplomas, um, what types of cords, what types of seals, that the, that would all be part of that discussion, that's definitely something we're interested in. I, I want to say centralizing or monitoring, but not, not getting rid of the like artistry of the graduations themselves.
There are, there are awards, like we were talking about this at graduation.
Right.
Because we had many hours to sit there. Some, some of those, some, you know, like, like the, the Ram Award, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that, that, that goes back years and people know and, and love that award. And making that a district-level thing, that would just pull the special right out of it.
Yeah, we want to like, like walk that line between tradition between, of the schools, but then also some consistency so that we do have lots of students that move schools and, you know, like, what's a valedictorian at one school versus what's a valedictorian at another school, which I know is a whole different issue, but is also, I opened that can of worms. Um, but is also part of some of this that we're trying to figure out, so.
And, and many of them are the same. I mean, the military cord is the same across our schools, all schools. SEAL civic readiness, SEAL a biliteracy, um, national merit scholar, uh, apprenticeships, the CTE awards, the, um.
Sterling.
Sterling, thank you, Sterling scholar. You know, so, so there is a lot of consistency in some of those. And then, you know, we have some that come out this way.
Oh. Brian and then Charlotte, and I'll go after that.
I'd like to look just for a minute back at the sample college requirement table because this was something as I was looking at it. And maybe you can help me understand. Let me talk about those top-tier schools and things like that. You have families that, okay, they are teaching their children exactly what they have to do in order to qualify to get into that school. And, I mean, there's the classes, you have to have a certain amount of service, you've got to have all of this stuff on your, um, transcript resume, I guess I would say. I think that if we're looking at this, this is a way that we're making it more equitable for students that don't have that sort of mentorship, where they're being guided through, I mean, this is a sophisticated process. And I know that, you know, school counselors are supposed to be advising and all of that. But I think that sometimes you have a student out there that doesn't really, they're not thinking about a top-tier school when they start their high school. But then they really get into it and, I mean, they love school or whatever, and then they get to the end of their junior year or their senior year and they're going, I don't have enough time to get, do you understand what I'm saying?
Right, absolutely, right, if all of a sudden they wake up and say, I think I would like to go.
Yeah, and so to me, when you're developing this, I would hope that you're thinking about those sorts of things as well. And the next level, okay, so you've listed University of Utah as, I guess, that's second-tier or moderately selective or whatever. Are we making it so that the students that are graduating from the Salt Lake City School District are going to have what they would need to get into the University of Utah?
School right up the hill.
Yeah, and, I mean, to me, those are things that you need to be thinking about when you're, um, addressing these diploma options.
I just wanted to add on to that, especially kids from eight-four-one-oh-four and eight-four-one-one-six zip codes on the west side. There are, there's a much lower rate of students from those areas or people from living in those zip codes graduated and from the university or going to the University of Utah, but especially graduating. Um, but UNP, University Neighborhood Partners, was created in two thousand and one to address just that issue. But we should be, as a district, you know, um, working hand-in-hand with UNP on that.
I mean, that was one of the things that I was speaking to with my experience. And I mean, I'm, I'm with elementary children, but there are some that even at that point, you can see incredible potential, but they don't understand what's going to be required here.
Process, right?
Yeah, the process. And I just think that it's a really important piece of this to be, I mean, and Bryce, you're a part of the Benyon Center or whatever, but it was really a miraculous thing when the Benyon Center started sponsoring that. Okay, you bring all the sixth-grade children in the Salt Lake City School District, and I mean, they did it with other districts as well. But you're bringing them to the University of Utah and they're seeing.
At an early age.
Well, in sixth grade, and that was a really wonderful day for a lot of my sixth-grade students that they're going, I had no idea this is what it was like.
Um, the other thing I wanted to say was, I really liked the idea of having an attendance requirement for something because that's what we're struggling with, and it seems to me we need to change the culture. You know, and if the culture is, oh, senioritis is just normal and we're just going to slough away most of the, you know, that's not a good culture.
I was going to add in.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no worries, and it kind of gets back to one of your previous kind of points, Dr. Hall. You know, one of the thoughts I, I thought, and if I misunderstood, I'm super sorry about this particular study session, is how do we incorporate like students, right, into this discussion? We'd like, oh, should we invite the student board member, should we not? Oh, well, their term hasn't started yet, even though they're appointed kind of thing. But I, I think there's a lot of value based on the conversation, especially around culture and, um, why certain students have certain viewpoints about graduation or school in general. Um, how are we incorporating our students in, to this process, right? And I think that was one of the things we wanted to talk about today. Sorry if I misunderstood. Um, but the culture piece is, I mean, it starts early, you know, it starts really, really young. And I remember my time in Granite and a couple of different roles I had. Um, in South Kearns Elementary, we were really specific about college and career and to the point that, um, I actually ordered probably fifty different little, they're little flags, but we hung them from the ceiling in the hallways, you know, like, teachers had them in their classrooms, right? Like, there was this effort to set that expectation and tone and standard at a very, very early age, um, about the importance of college and career and working yourself towards that with, you know, your teachers and your parents and your principals and all the way through your, your, you know, K through twelve career. And so there's some of those pieces along with the community partners and then mostly, you know, how do we incorporate students into this conversation as the school year goes on?
And so I, I just, and I know we started a little bit late, and so I just want to take us to that point, which is we looked at, you know, and we've talked about exploring some of the changes and their implications a little bit. But in terms of next steps, one of the things that we had talked about doing here tonight, obviously, we don't have students yet, um, but we will have them shortly. And you had talked about putting out a survey and we had looked at, you know, how can we do that in, um, Canvas and, and make that happen when they come back? And so what might be some of the questions that you feel as a board would inform your next steps as we continue to talk about this process?
I think it would be helpful to know the timeline and would you anticipate making the decision, which you talked about before. And I think it'd also be really helpful to narrow the scope of what the decision would actually be, because I do think, for better or worse, we are a very elementary-focused district. And Emily is not only nodding as I looked over, but, uh, she has spoken about, we have these other academic issues that are very heavy for the high schools. So I think actually really narrowing the scope of what we're being asked to do and how it looks in relationship to only issues at high schools is helpful. Um, so timeline and scope. And then also the area to consider that I circled from your like list of recommendations or considerations was the, that we actually risk widening opportunity gaps if we don't have proper counseling. And I think whatever we have, that's why the timeline would be so important to me, is knowing we actually have enough time to roll out a change, know that that change could be counseled appropriately and that students would be aware of all of their options so that we maximize whatever the intended benefits are. So for me personally, those are the things.
And, and making it very clear that changes would never affect a sitting cohort, right? So if you are in school as a freshman, our freshmen who start school this year are on the twenty-four because we do not make changes to students once they have started a cohort, unless the state tells us to. But, you know, that's rare.
And I think it's worth clarifying, the timeline that we were looking at is, if we, if you as a board wanted to make a decision on this to change diploma requirements, we'd like to know by October so that we had some time to implement it for the following fall for freshmen coming in that next fall, to get the words out or the information out, to get it to counselors, to work with them on the process. So, we can in a way, on the scope, make this as simple or as complicated, um, as you would like as a board. We brought this with the idea of, the original idea was rather simple. We think it's important to raise the number of credits required. And we called it an honors diploma, which may or may not be the proper term if it's just raising credits, um, but an advanced or a something. And distinguishing perhaps between a twenty-four and a higher credit diploma and keeping it that simple, uh, in the request to think about as a board. So it's really your interest in driving the change. As a, as leaders in the district, we thought it important to consider a higher credit diploma. How many credits, what kind of credits, those sorts of things are, are really kind of on the table for this, particularly this distinction between a standard diploma and some sort of advanced diploma or the minimum diploma and the standard diploma, however we wanted to name them.
May I ask a follow-up question about that? The, um, there are other things that are on the table that have sort of been alluded to, including weighted grades. And so I do think that narrowing the scope of what we are asked to do is helpful because we don't approve whether or not grades are weighted. True, that is accurate, that Tiffany's department makes that decision in collaboration with you. So, at the same time, counselors don't want to, for fall twenty-twenty-six, roll out an honors diploma or however it's titled requirement, and then in fall twenty-twenty-seven, roll out a different weighted grades requirement, right? So, the scope for what we're being asked to decide, I think, could be quite narrow. But I would like to know, are we solving some of the problems at the same time that have been referenced?
And then Amanda, after Emily.
Yes, we are solving some of, we're solving all of those, every problem we're solving. Um, no, but we, we are having like, yeah. We're having extensive conversations regarding weighted grades and how we're, um, going to move forward with that at West and then at the other high schools. Um, we have some things that we're probably going to put out in the next week or so, um, around that to try to, to, to problem-solve. But I, I hear what you're saying. So, yeah, we, there are a lot of sort of s- small grain issues that are sort of umbrellaed under the, a diploma issue. And so I guess, like, and I don't have, um, so I hear what you're saying on that. And I don't have, you know, we're not making the diploma issue, I'm not making the diploma issue decision clearly, but it's up to you all what order you want.
Well, Emily, could those things be done in conjunction with this? Along a similar timeline as this diploma? I think Board Member Anderson's remark about, what if we rolled out all the new things at once for high schools, might be a better way to think of doing it rather than piece by piece?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a few things, piece by piece, we might need to do first, for teacher buy-in and just some things to make sure people understand the what and why kind of thing.
That whole process would need to be in place. What I mean is, do you think decision-making on those things could be done in a way that if we were to start a new diploma in 2026, 27 for incoming freshmen, those other pieces could be part of that?
Yes, I think that if we decided, like, for the, you know, incoming freshmen in, like you said, 26, 27, we're going to have these diploma options, I feel like by then, we would have made some ser- significant ground, um, progress, I guess is a better word, on a lot of these issues.
Okay.
Yeah.
Say by end of October?
No, on a lot of these issues, just.
Yeah, no.
That we'd roll them out. We'd have enough of it done that we could roll them out as a package for the coming year.
And part of the issue's been just the identification of the problems, I think, has been tricky. Being, like, in my role, becoming more familiar with how each of the high schools does things and being like, oh, just like, sort of identifying and uncovering. And I really feel like, maybe starting last January or even December, it was like, very much, all of a sudden, there was a big understanding, I think, regarding, like, what was happening and what we were working to solve. So I think, I feel good that some of that's been uncovered and we know what, we know what the problem is now.
So what I was going to say is, um, a couple of things. I like what you're saying here. Let's get it down to just the basic options first or agreed upon options, like, um, what our diplomas are going to be like, if we're just going to do two, this. I, I prefer instead of a minimal diploma, to call it a standard diploma, which would be the 24. And then advanced diploma, which, you know, we could determine how many, but 27, 28. And then simultaneously figuring out how we can increase our concurrent enrollment classes, because that's, uh, their, their, kids really would like to do that, but their options are pretty limited. And I know the, um, FTE, uh, uh, from the numbers standpoint, it may seem adequate, but I just, my own experience with my kids is, a lot of times, um, not getting the classes that they would like to get. And so they're just kind of stuck in something else to fill another classroom. So, um, it, just having an adequate number of spaces doesn't necessarily create to, um, something that will, they would enjoy and engage in. So if we could actually, if we need to move it along, let's figure out, are we doing two? What are the, um, number of credits? What are we going to call them? And then that's a baseline. And then from there, you know, we figure out next steps.
And I should amend my remarks, I should have used Dr. Hall's language. A basic diploma, a standard diploma and an honors diploma, I think is a nice way to.
If we do three. If we do two, then change it. And the other thing I actually forgot to mention and emphasize, I truly do not like the, let's say, the, the starting, the 24 credit diploma, assuming we stick with the 24, um, not encapsulating the school that they're attending. Because no matter if they get 24, 28, 30, whatever, uh, there's a lot of pride in the school that they attend. And so that kind of penalizes them, um, for graduating. And so I think we need to rethink it and have the first one include the school and then the next level be some kind of buildup in addition to that.
Seal, special seal on it or?
I, I agree with that as well. I don't think, I mean, they're from that school, they should have their school's name on it. I, I don't know.
I appreciate both of you saying that. And I know we're running a little bit over, but we did start a touch late. I also have the, some thoughts about, similar to Charlotte and Amanda, about, um, the school name. But I think to get back to one of your questions, Dr. Hall, about the survey and, and what kinds of things we might want to, want to ask. And I think that culture, you know, like, what is this, our student population's thoughts and realities, you know, perceptions of their education and the importance of a high school diploma? And, um, setting that baseline might be something valuable for the board and for students and teachers. And I think similarly with teachers too, how we engage our teachers, um, very similarly. You know, how, how do we come up with some kind of baseline about where our student population is at with how they might value their education? Because I, I think, um, in my time on the board, it's probably shifted quite a bit from, um, prior to the, I'm sorry, pandemic times, but prior to pandemic to post. You know, I think we're seeing a lot of changes in, um, educational culture just in general around, um, students and parents and families and communities. And, um, if we can capture that some way, that'd be really helpful, I think.
So, um, I, I know we're over, so I'm going to go to.
Near the last two comments.
But President Salazar, also, I, I would love to have your, uh, a sum of the next steps that, that we will be taking.
This is just, I, in addition, I would hope that we would not just do a survey, but we have some discussion, you know, some town hall, or, I don't know.
We had talked about having the student board members try and do some of that work for us when they're here. And maybe we can speak that way and maybe bring some students to the board meeting, that sort of thing, so we can talk to our student board members about some of that too.
Brian and then Amanda, the last comment.
So you're talking about questions on the survey. Have we asked how many plan to go to college? How many plan to go to, like, a vocational school? Because that dynamic is changing now too. And I think we have to have that information in order to know. I mean, we talked about, okay, having classes that would get them to the University of Utah or whatever. But then, maybe they're not thinking about the, you know, if they're thinking about vocational, then, okay, what are they going to need to get into the vocational school? I, I think that those would be good questions.
Um, I did want to emphasize on my very detailed breakdown of the feedback that I got. Some of the students that did that feedback were, um, uh, accelerated learners and more advanced, and they still, um, saw the value in offering the basic diploma at 24 credits for those kids that needed that option just to graduate. So, um, I'm not saying we don't need to do the survey. I just want to point out that these are kids that recognize that not all kids, um, want or can, or whatever the reason, go for more credits.
Oh, all I was going to say is that in addition to the student board members and the student advisory group, we were kind of talking about, um, the Avid classes could be really good ones for discussing this and getting some diversity of, like, levels of academic learning and different backgrounds and neighborhoods that could, um, probably would really enjoy talking about this issue. So just another thought.
Uh huh, yes.
Dr. Hall, anything you want to close out with?
Okay, so, um, we'll have our student board member, I believe, in our September meeting. So if we were to draft some questions for a survey and maybe reach out to some of the classes at the high school that could maybe do some small focus groups with us, is that, is there anything that I can provide to you in terms of reading or thinking that would help you, between now and the answers to survey data from students, make a decision about what philosophically you would be leaning toward doing as, as a board?
I'm curious, would it be easier to just basically be like, board members, here's three options. We have three diplomas, this is a structure. We have two diplomas, this is a structure, we stick with one. And then see where we all land, uh, as far as the majority. And then, you know, uh, what are they called? What does the insignia include? Like, the basic would include the high school, the advanced, or whatever we name it is the other. And then we start with that, like, bare bone structure so that we know what we're building from, and then we go from there.
Thank you, Dr. Hall, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the work behind all this.
Yeah, very informative. And you already have some books here for us to check on, right?
Yeah.
Reading.
Yep, they're good articles.